Public work, we have some people filtering in so we're just gonna give everyone a second to get situated.
You know who does my mind?
My goodness, we're not gonna have an album.
Mine's Chris.
Oh, she did, did she tell you? Tell her to send me a text too, sometimes he all misses it.
I want them to put a tape here though so we know.
I need to get one thing. Okay, thank you Cable, everyone settled. Uh, the time is now seven thirty-two and I call this meeting to order. This, uh, it is Wednesday, August eighth, twenty eighteen, this is your weekly, or still weekly, I guess, summer schedule, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, this meeting is being audio and video recorded, it will be, uh, broadcast live on Channel Nine, and it will be replayed on Channel Nine as well as placed on YouTube. And with that, I ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to mention the passing of Sergeant John Brady. Uh, Sergeant Brady was shot down over Germany in World War Two, and this is the gentleman whose remains were, uh, recently returned and interred in Tonkin. So, uh, in his memory, I would like to ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, first on the agenda this evening, we have a presentation by Police Chief Robert McDonald regarding an incident on Forest Chief, uh, Street. Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, good evening, everybody. Um, first, I'm gonna talk a little about, something else first, about a dispatcher, part-time dispatcher, we had that worked with us for a long time. Um, Jimmy Holland, Jimmy worked with us, uh, he started back in two thousand and seven, he was a part-time dispatcher. Um, during his time, a part-time dispatcher would work the weekends. Um, when he was working, he was working Saturdays and Sundays, midnight to eight. Then, as the years went on, changed, the cha- uh, schedule changed and he worked maybe one day on the weekend. Um, Jimmy would come in on snowstorms, he'd come in bad weather, all that, he, he was always there when you needed him. Um, and I believe, he was a call firefighter and EMT before he was a, a part-time dispatcher, weren't you Jim?
Right.
I don't know the dates on that, but I know you were in there for a while.
Nineteen ninety-four?
Yeah. So Jimmy's been, uh, working for this town for a long time. Um, he, uh, worked part-time and he had a regular job, so when Jimmy, uh, would work all week, he'd come in on Saturday and Sunday and the guy never had a day off. It's like Leo Belichick, he said no days off. So, um, Jimmy was very dedicated, very good worker. Um, he, uh, put a lot of time in, so I just wanna tell him thank you for your service, and you are very welcome back if you wanna come back, anytime, I'll take you back. But, uh, Jimmy, good job. Anything Jim?
Wait for the first hurricane. We'll have to come back.
You'll be there, right? Yeah. All right, the next thing, um, as everybody's aware, we had a, an incident take place June twenty-sixth, um, in town here. It was a tragic situation and the guys that responded did one heck of a job. The guys that responded there were Patrolman Steele, Officer Tim O'Larry, and Patrolman Steve Ferreira. They were first on the scene. Um, I know how hectic that must've been, they did their job though, they did the best what they could do and they did it. Um, I forgot, let me back this up. Vanessa Smith, she was the dispatcher that night, she was the one that took the first call. And, uh, I can just imagine what it was like in there. Calls after call, she was getting orders from the, the guys on the scene. Um, she was give, probably getting calls from news stations, and it probably never stopped from the time she got that first call till she went home. So, um, she did one heck of a job there too. Um, next, it was, uh, Patrolman Ryan Richards, Ryan was, is our detective. Um, he was called to the scene, he worked hand-in-hand with the State Police. Um, during that time, it was a long process, a long night, um, this went on for a couple of days, this investigation, and it's still going on, so we really can't talk about it much. Um, but he worked hand-in-hand with them and he did a fantastic job. Um, Sergeant Cronin, he was off that night, it was his day off. Um, I got the call from Ryan about the incident and I was out of town at the time. And Sergeant Cronin came in, he got there to the scene, he secured the scene, he, he was in charge of the, the whole operations. Great job, can't ask for anything better than that. He was calling me, at least five, six times on myself on my way back from, I was in Boston on my way back, telling me what was going on, everything, and, I'm gonna tell you, the guys did a great job. And, when I got there, it was unbelievable, they, everybody was doing what they're supposed to do. Um, you know, it was, it was, it was bad, it, it's a shame that this happened, but, um, they did a good job. Um, I wanna commend the, uh, Fire Department too, Chief McGee. His guys also responded, uh, Fire Department with the A-one staffing, whoever was on that. Um, ambulance responded, they were over the top too, they mean, it's, everybody worked together. It was just a bad thing and, but everybody did the right thing. Um, I, I gotta tell you, with this town, the, when, when something happens, the police, fire, highway, we, we work together, we do the job, do the right thing, and we make sure the town is covered. Um, but, you know, it, it, it's a shame that this, this all took place, and, uh, I'm sorry to hear that, and I just wanna say, these guys did a great job, and town should be proud of you guys, everyone is, good job. Anything guys? No? Well, good work fellas, and Vanessa. Thank you, very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, very much, we appreciate it. Now we're gonna move on to public input, does anybody have anything they'd like to say? You'll get another chance at the end of the meeting as well. And as we discuss different items. Okay, we have, we're being shy tonight, all right. Uh, we'll move on to the Town Administrator's Report. Um, and we'll start with the Budget Review Meeting Status Update unless...
I'm gonna actually make a motion that we go out of order, that we go to Old Business Number Seven. Uh, A, Letter A, Ratifying the Police Chief's Contract.
Okay, do you wanna make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Selectmen Pacheco. All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it and the motion passes. Ratify Police Chief's Contract, uh, Selectmen Pacheco.
I'm gonna make a motion that we ratify the Police Chief's Contract, uh, going back retroactive to July first, twenty eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, discussion?
Okay, since I'm the one that raised the issues last week, I wanna give you a report on what I found out. First of all, the number of years that a contract can be issued for, I got five different answers. All of them from attorneys, um, some from Department of Revenue. Uh, in looking back at the history, the chief has had three-year contracts, last year he had a one-year contract. So the three-year, or two years this year is, that's resolved. Uh, I would like to say publicly that if, uh, I offended anybody, I am truly sorry. I was not singling out anybody, it was a question when I saw the contract, because I knew that the chief had had a one-year contract. So I apologize to anybody and everybody who may have been offended, right? Um, and having looked into this and found out how this whole thing worked out, and I'm thinking, no wonder there's confusion, right? The, uh, my questions have been answered relative to the term of the contract, so I have no concerns about that. The other issue I raised was joint supervision of the Communications Department, because it goes back to, as I said last week, when Mr. Costa was Chairman of the Board, which I believe was two thousand and six. It was before my time. So, I think the only thing that has to be resolved was whether or not, uh, Chief McGee was contacted, if he's interested in joint, uh, supervision, like was set up. Uh, if he is, then there are steps the town can take so that both of the chiefs are compensated equally under, uh, EEO policy. If he doesn't wanna take it, then we move on with the current chief's contract, and we need to go back and do something about that directive, that I'm looking for, that goes back to, uh, the two thousand and six, uh, directive from the Board of Selectmen. Uh, so, my question is, does Chief McGee have any interest in joint supervision?
No, and also his contract precludes him from taking on any other duty. So if it did move to that combined oversight, we would have to reopen negotiations with him as well.
Okay, so the first thing, uh, after we get through, I don't know if we can do this before, the first thing we have to do is rescind the appointment of Chief McDonald for a one-year appointment that was made in June, and reappoint him with a two-year appointment which will match the contract.
Do we really have to do that though? We appointed him for a year, and next June we're gonna reappoint again, we can reappoint, reappoint him for the second year.
You're issuing the contract now?
No, I, I understand that.
I always believe the contract prevails. So, it would supersede that vote, but to be clean, you can make that appointment just to be...
Okay, and I will do that after we get through acting on, on this, uh, where we are right now. Um... Then the other thing, I think the other thing that needs to be done, and I will make the motion on that also, is that, that directive that was put in place in two thousand and six, okay, be... I don't know if we can declare, we won't declare it null and void, but, uh, the, this board will... What this board will do is declare that supervision of communications will be the responsibility of the Police Chief going forward, which will take care of that directive, that there would be joint supervision, okay? But I'll make that motion after we finish action on this contract.
But he had already been doing that without the directive, correct?
No, 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 the, the, the original directive is what set this whole thing in motion.
Do we have that directive?
Uh, I've got the letter here. Did I give that out last week? It's signed by Frank Costa.
So, there's a motion on the floor right now, so if you vote on it and then this could be handled.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Uh, first of all, I would like to apologize to Chief McDonald, uh, for voting to table the, uh, the vote on the contract last week was based on information that, uh, Select Woman Gulat had given us, that there had no big, no one in town has been given a three-year, multi-year contract since that, uh, we got that memo from the Department of Revenue. Kinda find out, the Fire Chief has gotten a three-year contract, you've got, in the past, you've gotten a three-year contract after two thousand and twelve. That could've easily been resolved before last week if, uh, Select Woman Gulat had gone to the clerk, gone to, uh, the town accountant and got a copy of the contracts, and that could've been easily resolved. We spent twenty-five minutes last week discussing this contract, uh, a lot of it about the multi-year contract and the fact that we didn't have to do that, uh, upset me a lot, so I, if I offend you in any way by tabling it, it was based on that recommendation. This was a, a three-year contract that the Fire Chief had that she voted to approve, she signed that three-year contract. She made the motion to ratify that contract, the Fire Chief's three-year, multi-year contract, and then last week she's telling us that no one in town with these certain positions had, uh, three-year contracts, so... I'm offended we wasting twenty-five minutes, I don't wanna waste another twenty-five minutes on this, but I support the, uh, the contract as written, and, uh, we're hoping that we would vote to approve that contract.
Yeah, I don't have much further discussion, thankfully I don't have anything to apologize for. Um, all I wanted to say is, just from like a logistical standpoint, it didn't really make sense to have the Fire Chief who's in a different building, and this is no disrespect or slight to Chief McGee at all, who's doing a fantastic job, um, but it didn't make sense to me to have someone in a different building supervising people in a different building on a different street, so, um, that's all I had. Does anyone have anything else? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, the motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, to follow up on what I said, I will make a motion to rescind the appointment of Robert McDonald, that was done, I believe, on June the sixth, for a one-year appointment, and recommend that he be appointed to a two-year position.
Ending?
Uh, June...
Twenty-twenty.
Thirty-fifth, nineteen...
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty, to match the contract.
So now we wouldn't have, if it passes, we wouldn't have to reappoint him next year?
Next year he will be on the reappointing list.
I'm, I'm absolutely okay with that.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion, hearing done, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion, well, wait a second, then I'll read this. I will make a motion that, uh, beginning with July first, two thousand and eighteen, the responsibility for supervision of the Communications Center will be that solely of the Chief of Police.
I'll second that, I don't think it's necessary to vote on that, it's in his contract that we just ratified, but I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion?
Yes, June twenty-third, two thousand and six, to the Board of Selectmen from Jennifer Louise Town Accountant. On June fourteenth, two thousand, two thousand and six, you inform me of a monthly two-hundred-seventy-five dollars stipend for the Chief of Police and Fire Department for overseeing the Communications Department. Please advise me as to what accounts the stipends will be paid from. I am unable to create a separate salary stipend line in the Communications Budget. I believe the bottom line of Communications Personnel would be able to absorb the amount until the special town meeting in the fall. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me, thank you for your assistance in this matter. It says, "Agree," should conform, should come from Communications Budget Tom. That looks like Tom Pius writing. Um, and also Frank Costa signed it on June twenty-ninth, um, two thousand and six. So that was part of what I was talking about last week.
It would really, and this is just like a per, a suggestion for going forward, if the town accountant is gonna provide you with documentation, I'm pretty sure she's also capable of giving it to everybody else. So can we knit that in the bud going forward?
Okay, I didn't have it, I've mentioned it last week, but I didn't have it. But I do have stuff that, I do have other records in that I certainly can share with you, 'cause they are public.
And I, I respect that you wanna share them with us, my point is, the source is not providing the documents to us, so my request is that everybody have the same information before we come in here. Because I felt, like with that DOR letter, which I appreciate you showing us, uh, last week, I felt like, how did I, how had I never seen this before? So, um, it's slightly concerning, so if we could just get everybody on the same page when we request documentation, that's all I'm asking, so we all have the same thing. 'Cause I would never come in here with some letter that you had never seen, or I certainly wouldn't do it to you either, or the Town Administrator, so that's all I'm asking.
And that's why I asked for more time, and I thank Mr. Pacheco for seconding that motion to table so that I could get all this stuff together. But I can certainly photo all of this and give it to you, because now I've got it.
Thank you. All right, settled? Happy? Thank you Chief. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, the ayes have it, motion passes. There goes the public.
Good luck Chief.
Thank you Chief.
Thank you, oh, thank you.
Thank you Chief, too, thank you.
And thank you for standing out there in the rain with your department, over the weekend. From the Pan-Mass out.
Oh, oh, all right.
Uh, if it's okay with my colleagues, we're gonna move back to the Town Administrator's Report. Uh, Madam Administrator, you have the floor.
Okay, um, riveting stuff, so part of my contractual goals are to revise and revamp the budget process, um, iron out the wrinkles that we experienced last year. So the Finance Committee Chairman, the Town Accountant, our intern, um, who's last week is next week, so we took advantage.
Last week, I didn't even meet them.
Ah, he's great, so, um, he is going back to college, but I did put a bug in his ear about maybe helping with, um, as we roll out the budget over the break, uh, 'cause that's where we could use some, some help, but anyway. So he sat down in our conversation and we talked about and analyzed the budget process, what worked, what didn't, where are our major problems, um, we're talking about the budget review in case you have anything to, okay, good. So we sat down, we hashed out what, what worked, what didn't, what needs to improve. A lot of this centered around other groups meeting deadlines, paying attention to due dates, helping us help them, um, getting ducks in a row before crunch time and crisis time, so that means verifying payrolls all the way in January, even we're thinking, even though we're thinking of a, a summertime meeting for the budget. Um, so what you have before you is just a summary of what our proposed budget is and a rough outline of what the schedule will look like as far as when budgets are coming before you to look at, to, um, make recommendations and send over to the Finance Committee. That's really all I have, this is just submitting to you. Um, we're gonna try, roll this out, I did submit this to the Town Accountant just to make sure that she agreed, so the budget process, I did hear back from her on the schedule, the, um, report, I just wanted to make sure that I summarized everything, you know, because I'm summarizing her words, and I wanna make sure she knows that I'm doing it correctly, um, and if not, she's correcting me. But, um, I haven't heard back from her, but she is closing her book, so that's nothing. But anyway, this is just submitting to you as part of my goals, and, um...
Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz, we'll send it over to you if you have any time.
Mr. Chairman, you have the floor.
We had a really good roundtable discussion that centered around mu- a multitude of different things, but you know, the, the bottom line that came out of it is, we wanna make, uh, department heads and, and people throughout the organization accountable for meeting the timelines. And that's all of us. I know, even, even my committee, once in a while I'll get a call from Jen and go, "Hey, you know, you were supposed to send that to me last week." But we, we, we just wanna make people more accountable through the process because the dates that, that the Town Administrator and the Town Accountant come up with are not arbitrary dates, they're, they're dates that have a, have a meaning to them. So, um, it centered around that, is, is making people accountable and making the process a little more user-friendly for all of us from that, you know, the seventeen different versions and pages and the paper this wide and, you know, how can we get a little more electronically friendly, that, uh, that we can provide the information easier to everyone? So, it, it was a really good discussion, we included the intern, so, uh, from the Town Accountant's office, so he was able to join in and learn a little bit about what goes on, so...
We also put him to work, 'cause he created the shared document.
Yeah, so, so we've created a shared document for the Finance Team that will be able to, so if we make changes at the Finance Committee, they will automatically be sent to Mallory and to, for, for, to Mallory for the Board of Selectmen and to Jen, so we don't have to, after our meeting, send seventeen little notes to Jen, and every department head needs to run back to Jen and make a change for this, that, and the other. We will do it, uh, through a shared document, that's, that's a working document available to the Finance Team.
And so this is, um, like a cloud where it's like updated in real time? That's fantastic.
Right, and then color-coded of who's updating what.
Now no one is using a wrong or outdated version.
Exactly, frozen columns, so we can't...
Like, I know Nancy got frustrated with the seventeen different ones we had, over the whole...
Was it seventeen or twenty?
Well, it was close, during the last period, that, the pile that everyone had, you know, to us the most important's that top page anyway, and that won't change, that won't change. That's the document that, that everything will feed into, but, um, we just, we really wanna make it much more user-friendly, so... I thought it was, it was, it was a very productive meeting. Granted, I had to run out 'cause of work called, but...
We still worked after you were...
Real work called, the one that pays the bills, so, but, thank you.
I wanted to thank Finance Committee, Town Accountant, Madam Administrator, and our intern, uh, for being extremely proactive and not, you know, waiting until December and now, um, so to change it now, I think is fantastic, good work everybody.
Thank you.
So this isn't a process that we have to vote on, as it's proposed?
Nope, this is my, I'm submitting a report to you, you need to know because...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That I'm doing my work.
Very good, thank you.
Did you, Selectman Gulat?
Um, so, is, I, I'm just trying to follow the sequence of events. So the Town Accountant will send out the notice, like, "I need your information by..."
No, that's a, a memo from me.
All right.
Um, that lists all of these dates and basically breaks everything out into, if you don't submit your budget, it's zero, your department request is zero. I know that sounds harsh, but we really have to draw a line, people were not, I watched the Town Accountant make so many changes and just scramble back and forth, which ultimately led to...
Exactly.
Mrs. Brady making very, tons of last-minute changes, it was just a mess. That's, I think, the, the shared document combined with hard and fast deadlines that everyone needs to meet, um, including us, so get ready, 'cause we'll be talking about the budget very early.
You're holding us accountable now, okay.
Yeah, um, so we will be talking about it quite a bit, um, but we have to make these deadlines and do something drastic so that people will respond, so...
Okay, so you'll send the memo. Is Jen gonna collect the data and plug it in?
So that's the, right, so she plugs it in, or me, or if John's around, we, that's certainly a duty we could give to him.
But you'd all be working on the same document in the cloud.
So, last year, I like to see spending up until March, so I can get more of an accurate figure. Um, halfway through the year, then people start getting, you know, they spend their money, so, uh, I like to update the column until March. So I would do that and I would not bother the Town Accountant with that work, and she would update what she has. She was very specific about the columns she wanted to see, and she can freeze them so that nobody can touch them, which I think is very important, and even if they did, it's, there's a log. So we sat down and thought about the best way to roll this out, and this is what we came up with. Um, and Boards and Commissions are gonna be tasked to use the comment section. If you have an increase in hours that you're requesting, you need to comment on that, you need to see the Board of Selectmen if they fall under a collective bargaining agreement, and you need to get that approved before it goes to the Town Accountant. That's, you know, if your request is not approved, it's basically null and void, and you have some work to do about verifying your payroll.
I like that, because now it gives us a chance to, A, plan in advance, and B, it not forces the department heads, but now the department's heads really need to think ahead about what their department might need, and then they have to justify, you know, I'm just making this up public, but like a new, a new personnel, a new assistant or clerk of some sort. Um, so I, 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 we've talked about it quite a bit, um, at public meetings and just in general, so I think this is a welcome change, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any question?
So, so will version one be the first paper version?
Right, so last year, we had five versions, I get it, I think that's a lot too. So version one, uh, my plan actually to bring this here to the Selectmen is, I, we will compile and get all the department requests, hopefully people are a little bit earlier, but I will look at them, I will make my recommendations, call and have conversations if I have questions, but hopefully the comments can guide, and I will provide to you recommendations, Town Administrator recommendations, early. The Finance Committee won't really see them, so we won't get so confused later on, they will only see the Board of Selectmen recommendations, and that will be voted on by you. I'd like to put it in, you know, general government, we do all of that in one night, and break it up how the budget's broken up to just keep the flow of meetings and make sure they're not too long, although it is still on the table that we meet weekly, uh, during the budget process, so...
Absolutely.
We'll make it work.
Or at least as needed.
At least as needed.
'Cause we know, we, we know there will be weeks... Because we know, we know there will be weeks where we will have to. We can't wait two weeks. For the people sitting at home, wondering why we're even discussing this, previously, the finance committee had been tasked with, in concert with the town accountant, of course, kind of doing the budget. And what has happened since we've hired our town administrator, is the Board of Selectmen has really taken a lot of that task on, which is the authority of this board, and I believe that, to do the budget. So, of course, there were going to be very minor kinks the first year, so we're kind of just smoothing things out, which is one of the goals that we have for the town administrator for the upcoming year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Administrator, seize the floor.
Okay, policy, my second status update here is also a contractual goal, and it's the Policy Review Board, which I spoke a little bit about. So, we had a great first meeting. Thank you, everybody who's on that committee. These are volunteers from each union, a lot of the stewards, so I feel bad, they have a lot of duty, but we had a great first meeting, a good working meeting. We went over the employment policies specifically from that policy manual, and had a lot of hearty and good and healthy discussion. It's important to me that they know that it's an opportunity for them to provide feedback based on their own experience. You know, they're a resource, and I want to use them. So, we talked about the policy that kicked this whole thing off, where we realized that we had some work to do on our employment policies, was the town vehicle use policy. But I thought that it would be best to start with kind of your run-of-the-mill policies, your smoke-free workplace, your drug-free workplace, that we have to have in order to receive federal funding.
The non-controversial policy.
You'd think. So, I actually rewrote today the drug use, the drug-free workplace policy, and I actually have Sue looking at it with her HR mind, to see how it landed, because I did use a handful of different towns. And then we'll convene again. I'm early, I thought I would take a little bit of extra time, but I'm going to ask, they don't know this yet, but the Policy Review Board to meet faster than I originally asked them to. But I think if we can get this one done, that's pretty good, and we can, you know, get cracking on the other ones, so...
Do you mind if I ask a question about the Policy Review Board, and just kind of how you envision everything working? I suspect that what the board is going to do is to, before this board sees what the policy is, they will already have tentatively agreed to it, is that correct?
Right. And given their feedback, this won't work because of X, Y, Z. I'm not a firefighter.
And we see that feedback?
I don't know everything about firefighters. I'll talk about the feedback.
Okay, all right.
They're public meetings, of course, we keep minutes, or we will, I kept the first minutes, but Jocelyn is, Tavira's the library director, is going to keep minutes for the board. And we will craft out a policy that is amenable. It does not waive their right, the union's right, to have to bargain it, if that befalls them, but the idea is to get their impact, their input, so that they know that it's, you know, that it's agreeable to them, in how they view what's going on with the town and the public, and it's fair.
And it's fair, because we would expect them to work under those policies, so it's fair. I guess my question is, if that policy comes to this board, and pardon me if I'm getting a little ahead of myself, I like to think ahead, if we have suggested changes, does it then go back to them?
I don't think so. I think I would have to make an educated guess, based upon what your change is. So, if I know that what your change that you're requesting is a sticking point with at least one union, I would go to them. And also, once you vote on it, then it kicks in our normal process, where I would email it out to everybody, and then we would read it here, and they would provide their input. So, it's kind of a little bit of a pre-step before it gets here, but it's designed to hash out all of the, iron out all the wrinkles, hash out all the problems before it gets to you.
Before it's a problem.
Right.
Thank you, Madam Administrator.
Have you prioritized any of the policies? I mean, you know, drug-free workplace and all that. You were working on social media?
Yeah.
Way back, and we said, forget that, because there's all this other stuff. We were into budgets.
Right.
All right? But I was just wondering...
Where I'm at with those.
Our policy book has got a lot of stuff in it that we know doesn't apply. It doesn't mean that a policy, a policy should be made, it's just that the wording of the policies was taken from other communities that doesn't apply to the town of Dayton. So, I was just wondering if you had, or if the committee has started to say, we should look at this, you know, that's all.
So, the group of policies from the policy manual that is before that committee are 201, the 200s.
Okay.
It's the employment policy specifically. I did share with them what you ended up voting way back in March, I believe, of my recommendations on that section, one of which was the anti-harassment policy, which is up and running, and everybody's all set with it. And I did share with them what that vote was, and what settled with it. So, what's left out of that group, that bag, is the drug-free workplace, the smoke-free workplace, I wanted to update those, a computer use policy, a social media policy. I actually mentioned at the meeting, I want to do a social media policy, I know you're all going to have problems with this, start thinking now. Just start thinking about it now, and what you can wrap your mind around. So, that's very much on my list. I have a list of policies, it's about seven, that I want to write right now, and that's definitely up there, the computer use.
I'm thinking, and you know, it's tough, it's tough to foresee what will happen during budget season, but if we're going to have meetings that are kind of centered around the budget, and have a lighter workload, and that's what we're focused on, then maybe that's the time when we can start thinking about, you know, hammering out the policies and getting them in a finalized form. But we can walk and chew gum at the same time, and we'll confront that, you know...
If everything goes to plan with the budget, and I can get my recommendations compiled and set to you on time, like they're supposed to be, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
But best-laid plans.
Well, it is like a 200-page document that we're dealing with, so I understand it'll take time, but I want to commend you and this board for forming the Policy Review Board, because I think our vision is the least amount of, we don't want someone hearing about a policy and then having an issue with it. We'd rather confront everything beforehand, before it becomes an issue, so I do appreciate that.
Exactly, yeah, thanks. Okay, and my last update is just an FYI. I know Sylvia Way has been discussed prior to my arrival here, so I just wanted to let you know that there's going to be a public hearing by the planning board on September 5th, I think 6:00 or 6:30, I don't know, I'll make sure I get that to you, in case you want to go. That is to determine whether or not the planning board will agree to accept it as a town road, and that is my report. I also have this on here, in case you wanted to make a joint statement as the Board of Selectmen, a statement, send to your comments to the planning board, for them to have at their hearing, at which point we can do that next meeting, if you so choose.
Anything else, Madam Administrator?
I do not have anything else, thank you.
You're welcome. Can I take the floor back? No, just kidding.
Of course, sure.
Okay, old business, 7B, update on change order number two for the Dayton Police Station. We did receive, and I know we've kind of agreed to not read the correspondence, but this does pertain to a, you know, significant capital expense, so it's very short. It was addressed to Administrative Assistant Brady. Change proposal number two was rejected by the Police Station Building Committee. A change order is made up of change proposals, but only the ones that are approved. By the end of the project, we could have fifty change proposals, but only a few ever make it to a change order. See the attached change order log, we do have a record of that public. We didn't approve a proposal number two because of the price, and also because we concluded they were not necessary, working to save the town money. Example, the next change order could include change proposals 7, 10, and 13, just a matter of what is being approved by the Police Station Building Committee. And that was from our OPM, from Pomeroy Associates, Mr. McDonald. And thank you, Mrs. Brady, for looking into that for us.
Thank you.
Did anybody have any, I assume we don't need to vote on this, but does anybody have any comments on this? Questions?
No.
Okay. Next...
Oh, I'm sorry. May I request that the board take item 7D out of order, which is the request by the Harbor Master, because he is in attendance with Mr. Burrows?
You mean 8D.
I have, yeah, I have a wrong agenda, yep.
Sure, no problem.
8D, I don't have the moment of silence on mine. I saved paper, because I already printed it out.
Sure, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Thank you.
I have no problem with that.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman. We take Agenda Item 8D out of order.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Harbor Master Marino, you have the floor, sir, and it's nice to see you.
Nice to see you, too. In a recent meeting with Ms. Ehrenstein and Chief McDonald, I informed them that one-third of our staff had fallen ill, and it's undetermined when he'll be able to continue his duties on the water. He is able to continue to do the administrative portion of his position as mooring officer, but he's, at this time, not able to do the on-water portion. With that being said, I would like to make a recommendation to the board, with the support of Ms. Ehrenstein and Chief McDonald, that we add possibly Mr. Elliot Burrows to the staff of Harbor Master, as an assistant harbor master. So, with that, I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Elliot Burrows. Any questions?
I just have one very, and it's a very simple question, because I couldn't gather this from the actual letter, and thank you for sending us an official letter, Mr. Marino. My question would be, is the suggestion, or is the idea to have Mr. Duffy remain as the mooring officer, but not an assistant harbor master?
No, because the mooring officer is an assistant.
Okay.
Is and always will be.
Yep.
And a direct report to the harbor master.
Okay. So, we just be adding...
But at this time, he's not able to go out on the water, and, you know, I don't know when he will be able to. I would ask that you speak to him directly about that, because I don't know his condition other than he's not able to go out on the water at this time.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions?
I just, I noted that you graduated from Joseph Case High School in nineteen sixty-six.
Sixty-six.
Okay, so I was a freshman there that year, graduating in sixty-nine, and I see that you graduated from UMass Thomas, it was actually SMTI at that time.
It was SMU on the diploma.
Was that right?
But I have a license plate that says SMTI, so...
Okay. So, just, you know, and I went to that school also, so just the fact that you went to both those schools that I went to, I'm in favor of this.
At this time, do you, if Selectman Gulart doesn't have any questions, was there, did you want to make a statement or anything, Mr. Burrows?
No, I just wanted to be in person, introduce myself.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Look forward to serving the town.
Absolutely. Selectman Gulart, did you have any questions?
I'm just wondering, you have a pretty free schedule that you can...
Very.
Okay. Okay.
And I live right on the water, physically right on the water.
Yeah. So, I'll make a motion that Mr. Elliot Burrows be appointed as the assistant mooring officer.
Harbor Master.
Harbor Master, excuse me.
And you seconded that. We have a motion and a second discussion.
I actually have just a statement, if I may. I just wanted to say that I support this. I have been kind of looking at the Harbor Master position, and I'm trying to, I want to beef it up in a little bit of like professionalism, and getting it going, and giving Mr. Marino some support in that, in kind of rolling out this department. So, I am, I think you're a welcome addition, and thank you, I just, if that matters.
And I thank you very much for your support.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, motion passes. Welcome to the board, Mr. Burrows.
Thank you.
And thank you, Harbor Master Marino.
And we hope Mr. Duffy is back with us soon, and makes a good recovery.
Absolutely. And we'll be in contact regarding the boat ride, Harbor Master Marino.
I responded to that.
Absolutely. Thank you both. Gentlemen, have a great night.
Are we doing a ride-along?
Yes.
I don't want to do a ride-along.
We have to. All right. So, we are still on old business. Status of Town Administrator and Department Head Evaluations, Madam Administrator.
This is actually on the agenda, per the request of Selectman Pacheco, just looking for an update on where that is. I was not doing a lot of work. I mean, I have a folder on this, that's been sitting in the to-do pile for a little while, but I do actually have Sue Maderos, in case you'd like to take a peek at it, did, I guess, put together a long time ago, some department head evaluations, based upon her experiences previous to her coming to Titan, and I do have a copy of those, if you'd like to look at it.
Absolutely.
But I have not been doing any work, and I sort of left it to the board.
Yeah, I had asked that be put on the agenda. I know that Selectwoman Gulart had talked about this, and she has some prior experience with her prior employment regarding evaluations, I was wondering if you had anything for us.
I do, yes. I've been keeping a list, I've got to get these keys out of my pocket, they're killing me here. I've been, I've got a list of projects, and some of them, and who the people are that I'm working with, and going back to early this year, when I met with Mrs. Ehrenstein, and we went over her evaluation, and her contract, and the job description, and I had that document from UMass that I got offline. Since that time, I do have two more evaluation forms from communities that abut us, that I have in the folder. As a matter of fact, when I saw this, I thought, I've got to ask Mallory, when she gets the time, we need to sit down, and discuss where we are with this, because I can do work on this on the side, while you're doing other stuff, and then, but I want to be able to show you what I've got so far. And in looking at those, the two new ones, I'll call them new, that I got, I think there are pieces in there that we can pull out and make a good evaluation form for, across the board, for appointed officials, whatever, okay?
I actually really liked the UMass one that you provided.
What I found interesting was, I, not the exact wording, but I saw elements in the other two, and those two communities said to me, what have you got? I said, I've just got something I downloaded from UMass, and sent that, and shared what was sent to me. So, we're not the only other one, we're not the only people looking at this.
Absolutely.
All right? But anyhow, I do have stuff, so we'll take a look at it.
Absolutely.
See what we can come up with.
I did speak to, oh, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, Chairman.
I'll be very brief. I did speak to my mother, who works in the legal field, and, just briefly, about what should be in an evaluation, and she said, you know, something like a self-evaluation is always part of like a professional evaluation, so I appreciate you working with Town Administrator Ehrenstein on this. As we know, it will always come back to the board before anything is approved, so everyone will get their chance to provide their suggestions, but I do think it's going to be something where we take elements that we like from a multitude of different... It's a fly, it wasn't, he wasn't hitting it.
He's not bringing it to order.
He's making you out of order.
He's dead.
He's executing.
He's writing, I go, what did he say wrong?
So just, just to wrap this up, I think when we have a chance to look at this, we'll pick out what we think is the best, put together an instrument, and as a draft, send it to the board. You'll have access to the source documents, because you might say, hey, you know what, you didn't include this one, but this is probably a good one. So we can do that. And it doesn't have to be gazillion pages, because the ones I got are varying in length, but the length of the one from UMass page-wise, I thought was pretty good.
It was like two or three, and then the self-evaluation was two or three.
I'm just tired after the last one, I gotta tell you.
That's, well, yeah, it was a long one.
Do you think you have a recommendation or a report for us by either the next selectment meeting, which is two weeks, which may not be enough time for you, or September twelfth meeting? Because I do think it's important that you-
Do you September twelfth?
I think September would be a better option.
I think it's important that you was, get the evaluation as soon as possible that we're going to use, because we're going to be doing evaluation in December.
I've got flexibility, you know, so when she has time.
So if you guys can work out some schedule.
We can do that. Thank you.
Good.
I did also, I didn't mean to imply, Town Administrator, that it just has to be something we approve. Of course, I, it's going to be something that you think is fair. Well, of course. All right. Did that go without saying?
If she approves it.
Correct, yeah.
Brett's mom approving.
She's got good advice, so I'll take it.
I'm sure she does.
Tough.
She's tough as nails. So we're going to have a draft ready for September twelfth.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
It's in my book, means it'll happen.
And regarding, and I, I should have told you this before, it is within every, my colleagues' purview to suggest anything they'd like on the agenda. I've, I don't think I've ever refused anything to be on the agenda, it's not how I roll, so, well within your rights, colleagues. Absolutely. All right.
That's appreciated.
Absolutely. So we will have a draft by September twelfth, which is when we officially transition to meeting on the second and fourth Wednesday of the month. Safe to move on?
Yes.
We're good? Okay. Update on municipal operations, efficiencies, recommendations, cost estimate, and floor plan of Selectman's office. Mr. Commissioner, you have the floor, sir.
Hello, Daniel. Joe Selectman. I think before you, you have a sketch, or you will.
Will in a second.
Thank you, sir.
So what you're looking at is a scaled, two-dimensional drawing of your existing Selectman's chambers, office rather, where your three desks and Ms. Brady reside, and the outline in red would be the proposed walls that would be installed, which would give you, the Board of Selectmen, a separate area that you can individually use and collectively use to store your files. So it's a fairly non-invasive building project. It's going to put up two non-structural walls. There's very little infrastructure that's impacted, if any. Cost-wise, this can be done for about sixteen hundred dollars and our labor. So the material cost is very small. The most expensive purchase will be the door, because there'll be a new door that will be installed in the hallway area, which will be a separate entrance to that particular office. The reason I did it scaled, and I put your existing desk, which you all sit at now, which is a thirty by sixty, in that room, so that'll give you an idea of what size room it is. It's not going to be a small room. So you can easily accommodate the desk that you have, one of them, and a couple of chairs, so if you were to meet with anyone or see a taxpayer, a citizen, you'd have more than enough room. And then the three cabinets, see what I was envisioning, and tell me otherwise was just a regular standard four drawer vertical file, three of them patched together. Each one of the Selectmen can have their own key and their own access to their locked files. Ms. Brady and I discussed logistics for getting you documents and paperwork. She agreed that just a simple wall file with your name on it would be, you come into the office, you can look in your file, pull out what's yours, and sit at the desk and review it. There were discussions about some access between the two, but because of the need for wall space, this room actually creates some significant wall space in that office. And the files that you see delineated both along the wall and in the center of the room are all proposed, so that'll be fairly fluid, but the idea is to use that wall space to put lateral files or vertical files, whatever deems necessary for archive in the documents. So it's a fairly functional setup. We discussed some of the logistics. You would each have to use the office individually, so we may have to set up office hours, things of that nature, but that's beyond my purview. But I could get this done fairly quickly, fairly inexpensively, and I think it, logistically, it would work.
How, oh, no, sorry.
My only concern, well, I guess I have more than one. But here's my concern. We wanted to do Old Town Hall so we could make, because we had a crunch here. Part of the crunch was not the Board of Selectmen. Part of the crunch is crowding in the Clerk's office. My suggestion would be finish Old Town Hall. I'm not sure that this would be a project that could be done in two weeks. You know better than me, but we all know how municipalities work, so things end up taking longer, they end up being more expensive, and I'm not speaking about any project you've ever done. We appreciate all that you do. So I'm not going to vote to support this. I really think we should finish Old Town Hall and then have a discussion, everybody in the same room together, to see how we're going to reallocate the space here. I really think we need to focus on the Clerk's office, there's crowding in there, before I'll support giving myself an office space. That's how I feel.
I tend to agree with that also, that, but I do think we ought to go down, at least try going down to one desk.
Oh, they can take mine out right now. Someone could take, where's Tom Ferry? We can take it out right now.
But I would like to tentatively go down to one desk. I'm not totally convinced it's going to work, so that's why I don't want walls put up yet. I think this is a great concept, and we had this discussion. I think somewhere down the road, I agree with you a hundred percent, let's finish the Old Town Hall. You've been doing a great job over there. You've got the second floor to finish. I'd like to see the emphasis on that. But we can actually set up the office with that one desk, kind of, to set up this setup, see if we like it. I know we don't have the privacy that you're talking about, but I don't want to do the expense if at some point I'm asking to make a motion that we go back to three desks. I think we, it can be worked out. I think I can, the only problem is, is on Wednesday nights or when we have our meetings, that the three of us come in. We all like to prep before it, so obviously the chairman will get the office, one of us will be here.
Not me. I don't, I could work anywhere.
Someone can hang out with me, too.
Someone can hang out with Mallory, someone, Town Administrator, someone can hang out here. So we do have that possibility.
Mm-hmm.
But I would like to try it as an experiment first, as we're doing the two weeks a month, trying to, as an experiment, make sure it works for the town and for us, so.
But I do think, and I didn't mean to say that we're not going to use the proposal. I think this proposal is part of the discussion of the reallocation when we're ready to do that.
So is it your opinion we shouldn't vote on the desk, right, going down to one desk?
Oh, yeah, no, they can take the desks out now. I just didn't want to vote on this, but I'm only one of three votes, so.
I'm going to make a motion then, that we go down.
I just wanted to know, Selectman Goulart.
Yeah, I'm looking at the drawing, and I'm concerned about the size of the space. If in fact it comes to fruition, I'm thinking laterals on this side would be better than, because you've got that, you've got, you've got space where you can put stuff, whereas if you have three tall ones, you know what I mean? Like, we've got a nice counter out there now that it's cleaned off, but, you know. But anyhow, my other concern would be, there's only one way in and out of that. I've never been in a public building that didn't have two ways out.
Yeah, because of the size of the room, it's legal. I wouldn't have drawn it if it wasn't.
No, but what I'm looking at right here, what I'm looking at right here, there's room, that there could be a door there.
You mean from the new space, if it was created?
Yeah.
It could, just, I came up with something based on the needs that I was presented with.
Yeah.
We were going to go down to one desk, or the hope was to go down to one desk, increase wall space for files for the Selectmen's office as a whole, actually for the town as a whole. So that's all. As far as prioritization, I agree, there's a lot going on right now, and there's been a lot of discussion about what we're going to do to repurpose space in this building. And I'm in complete agreement that that should be done in earnest after we have a meeting space next door, because that will allow us to have free space here, because moving offices around or repurposing offices may require some temporary office relocations, things like that. And so logistics are going to be a big part of it. I was just merely trying to come up with something that was, you know, seemed to be something that you wanted to discuss at the moment, and I was willing to do whatever it took to get it done.
And, and we did ask you to do this, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, but I just, I thought about it, and I don't want to send the departments who are crowded the message that I'm more important than them, because we all know this board is not more important than the department heads. The department heads run the town. They are more important than I am, so I just didn't want to send anybody the wrong message once I thought about it.
Understood. I will tell you all.
You think we're important?
From a logistics standpoint, well, you are important. That's why you're each going to get your name outside the door, but from a logistics standpoint, this is actually a fairly simplistic change. The other departments, when we tackle those, are going to be very involved, so mine was somewhat easy compared to what some of the other ones in this building are going to require. So, you know, we all need to be mindful that once that starts, there's going to be disruption, and people are going to have to, you know, learn to have some patience while it's going on.
I agree with what you said, because this goes back to when we first made the decision to create the new Town Hall office space, about who, who else in this building is really getting their toes stepped on because they're so crowded. I did, is the red line the original wall that was in there?
No, not quite, no, no.
Is this bigger?
It's slightly smaller.
Okay. Because I did get some history. I said, why was, was that put in when the building was built? And the answer was yes. I said, what was the intent? That's where they were going to put their administrator.
I heard, I heard. I like what happened.
Actually, actually, that's where you were going to be, when this, the previous board was discussing where your office was going to be. And I, quite frankly, disagreed. I said, you can't put the Town Administrator in a space like that. No offense to the Selectmen, but the Town Administrator has to have roundtable discussions with many persons. This is your roundtable, so.
Exactly.
And you actually gave up your office.
I did.
I did, too. I really appreciate it, too, and we get quite a bit of use out of that table.
Yeah.
We have meetings there.
No, it was the right thing to do. It's across from the Selectmen, and I have no qualms about it. And quite frankly, if you have a visitor next door, I love my new space, so.
One, I love my space, so we're all happy.
Good.
I think the other thing, too, is now that we're not making that, this change right now, the entire change right now, people watching, if anyone has any thoughts, let us know what you think.
Yeah.
It's open for discussion.
The other thing that I thought was, from a town government standpoint, and you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, if you had an office such as this, which was independent, then you could meet with people one-on-one and have office hours available to the public where they could know they could come in and speak with a Selectman, where we really don't have that right now.
That's true. That's true, and that will definitely be part of that discussion, absolutely. I totally agree.
So we can put it in the folder and bring it back out when we stop the discussions on this building. In the meantime, you'd like me to get some desks moved out?
If you don't mind. We'll have to vote first.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that the Selectmen go down to one desk, one shared desk.
I'm going to amend that to two shared desks. My biggest concern is, I got, I'm in the process of getting a new computer, but I don't have a town computer. I don't have a laptop, and I've got to have access to that one that's in there, because when mine dies or doesn't work.
Oh, I wasn't counting that one. Yeah, that one has to stay.
That workstation, yes, has to stay.
Yeah, I'm not even counting that as a desk, because nobody writes on that, we just type on it.
I actually like having that there.
I do, too. Yeah, I wouldn't support that. That has to stay.
So of the three items in the middle, I think, my question now is, is it one or two? And I always thought we were doing the, what was on the floor or the, for discussion was one desk and a table.
Well, when are we going to get the cabinets? Because I got stuff, if my desk goes and there's only one desk left, I got it.
You got to get it, yeah. So we can take care of it.
There's a bottom shelf in my, the little filing cabinet Karen got me.
Also, we are, we can prioritize cleaning all of this out.
Absolutely.
So that you're not left in the lurch. I mean, I'm, we're not going to, it's going to be like, Tom, take these, and then you're all set. I think that we will roll this out. I'm just waiting for the vote, really, because I'm not about to do anything without your approval.
So I assessed the room today, just in case there was a plan B, which there obviously is. There's very little wall space in there available, without creating some. There's one four-foot section between the windows where you could obviously put a four-foot file cabinet there, and if you go with laterals, such as you suggest, Selectman Goulart, you could probably stack two of them there. So, and if, and you would access it by consolidating the desks into one and having more floor area around it, so you would actually be able to get in those files. So that's one option that would alleviate the issue with not having your drawers anymore in your desk. So that's something that we could do fairly quickly.
Also, there's a case to be made, we should be cleaning that out a little.
Right, right.
We got to get to back there.
I've been cleaning my stuff out.
Yeah, but that shelf looks great, and we just kind of tidied it up and reorganized and boxed stuff up, and so we just, we have to do that, that's on us.
The table, if that's on the, on the floor, is not a bad idea. Like, tonight I came in conversed with Selectman Goulart a little bit. You know, every time I sit in that chair, I put my arm on the paper shredder and it goes off.
Same, I do the same thing.
It's going to factor in one day.
So, so it would be nice to have a small table or something, just something there so we can.
Or the ability to turn the chairs and actually.
Right, correct, right.
Because when I do it, I'm like, ha.
The chairs face Mrs. Brady. So she's, she's busy.
Could we do it in stages? In other words, take one desk out, get organized.
Yeah.
And then get the files or whatever.
That's a good idea.
And then look at, do it.
Absolutely.
Being the low man in the total poll, is it going to be my desk?
No, actually, the chairman.
They can take mine first.
Excuse me, the chairman's already offered.
Yeah, they can take mine first.
Christina Franka came over and picked out a desk, because she wants to get rid of her table and have an actual desk, so one is already going to be repurposed.
Let's get mine.
So, I guess so.
I don't know what's coming.
She came over and picked one, I think, but I don't know what she did. Yeah, I don't know what she did. She's on vacation, I think, so.
Okay.
But sure, I think that's wise, and also buys us some time. But as long as we have the vote, we can roll out an implementation.
We have a motion.
I'll offer an amendment that we do it in stages, that one desk goes, we get things organized, get the files, the second desk goes.
So we got to vote on the amendment first, then, or?
Yes. Well, it hasn't been seconded yet.
I'll second that. Talking phases, but it's pretty immediate, the phases, right?
Yeah, as long as we get the storage.
I'll second that amendment.
Okay. We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, and we all agree before we take this vote, mine will go first, because I barely have anything in there already.
I'll put that in the motion if you want.
It'll be, it's on, it's on camera. All right, let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Good work, team.
That's the amendment. Now we got to vote on the original motion as amended.
Which was to go down to one desk.
Yep.
One shared desk for the Selectmen.
We have a motion and a second, correct, to go down to one desk, discussion.
In stages, that's what they meant.
In stages.
Yes, so, yeah, we just need the vote on the original as amended.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Good work.
And I know that we're not in the process of buying the file cabinets right now, but I do agree with Selectwoman Goulart that they should, I would prefer myself lateral, maybe just two drawers. We don't have that much stuff, but.
Sure. No, I agree. What, you know, I have one that was kind of repurposed. For me, it's fine. I literally just put my stuff in there and folders by topic.
Conference call.
Pink.
Tan. Tan.
Get them pink.
We don't have any extra from your move, right? No? Okay.
Those are very nice.
Those are very nice. They are. That whole setup is great. Anything else before we move on to new business?
Well, are you still gonna go through this memo, or no? It's up to you.
What memo? Oh, the actual memorandum, okay.
Well, the other thing that I would like to address is the Personnel Officer. I'm not sure if we even know what the duties are, but I think I, I do agree with the recommendation. If you wanna elaborate on it, I'd appreciate it, but getting rid of the...
Which memo will be on now?
This, it's the original...
Removal of the Personnel Officer role is the one I'm addressing right now.
From this one, where there's the passports, and it was a bunch of recommending, there it is, yep.
Oh, before we move on to that, so, are we talking about doing anything with the passport area?
So, we are, what do you mean, with...
Well, we're gonna make some changes in there. If we eventually go to the little diagram, what's gonna happen to passports?
Well, hopefully, the library's taking them over.
No, actually, Ms. Brady and I, Mrs. Brady and I did discuss it already. We're actually gonna move the pull-down screen to the closet door area. The screen can come down over the closet doors. That would actually enable, when the public comes in, they can actually stay at the door, and Ms. Brady can work off her desk to do the paperwork, as opposed to another location. So logistically, that seemed to be the best place for it.
Now, regarding the Town Administrator's suggestion to remove the role of Personnel Officer, I also, I think you just said that you support it. I support it too. I think the reason I support this is because we have a Town Administrator who's working forty hours a week to manage the personnel, so I think it's actually overkill. The other thing is, I actually like the suggestion of limited scope here, where we would be basically voting and appointing one member of this committee to do things like develop and conduct employee evaluations, and to participate in union negotiations. I actually like that suggestion better, because it clarifies the scope of what that role is, and I think that's important to do, especially for the employees of the building. So that's my two cents on removal of the Personnel Officer as a role position.
Okay, so I asked the question historically, where did this come from, and what are the duties? It goes back to when Mr. Whalen was on the board. I think it was trying, around, I know Mr. Whalen was on the board when we had the 300th anniversary, which was 2012. And I think that's when it was created, and it was to deal with Personnel Matters, so forth and so on. And when the former selectman that we served with had this, it was Personnel Matters, collective bargaining, and all that other stuff. Since I've been appointed to this position, as I said tonight, I've been working sort of behind the scenes on this evaluation, which we're supposed to have for you anyhow. And I'm participating in the police depart, police union negotiations. Other than that, I haven't been involved with anything else. So I'm doing what is suggested here. That's all I can say to you.
And I just wanted to clarify for you, Sluck M'Goolat, this is not about who has the role. This is to clarify for future boards.
What the role is.
Yeah, exactly. Non-indictment on anybody. I've only been here for two years. We barely, we didn't really have a lot of personnel issues, so I just wanted to clarify that.
I think back at that time, there may have been, and I don't know for sure, but I think there may have been, and that's why they decided one person should handle it.
And that was totally appropriate for the time. There was not someone here forty hours a week managing the personnel and the operations of our government, so totally good for that time, but, you know, we've, we've changed the structure by adding a Town Administrator. That's what the people of Dighton overwhelmingly supported, a couple times, actually. So, Sluck M'Goolat?
Yeah, no, I feel comfortable with the Town Administrator taking over this responsibility. Whatever contract she works on and negotiates, always comes back to the Board of Selectmen. We have the final say, and if we reject any part of it, all of it goes back to her, and she brings it back to the, the union. So I'll make a motion then, that we remove the position of the Personnel Officer.
I will step down and second that motion. Discussion.
I thought we were gonna redefine it.
Well, that, then that was gonna be part of my discussion. Are you saying that there's not gonna be a Board of Selectmen member in union negotiations? Because what I wanna support tonight is basically defining that the Town Administrator manages the personnel, but I still would like, and it can't, I apologize, it cannot be me, because I work during the day full-time, but I still would like to have someone from the Board of Selectmen present in the union negotiations. So before we vote, I just wanted to ask what the Town Administrator's intent for this is.
So I also wanna reiterate, this is in no way personal, just, I think, a double duty. Actually, Nancy and I have been doing a great job, I think, on union negotiations. I find that if one, so there's only three of you, if one of you are in negotiations, in good faith, you need to come back to the Board and support what was discussed at the table and agreed to. So now, they only need one other person. That's the only, you know, with it. But again, it's, I think, and I'm not gonna speak for Nancy, but I think that it's been going pretty well. Our system is a good one, I think, and we've been on top of it notes-wise, so in case anything happens to either of us, somebody else could pick it up, which is something lacking for previous. So, I mean, I, I kind of, I'm comfortable either way, which is why I put it in there. However, it does give me a little bit more of an advantage if I'm negotiating by myself, but honestly, it's up to you.
Can I ask you one question, and then, Sluck M'Goolat, you will have the floor? Mike, I guess one of my concerns is, at least with one of us in there, we can take some of the heat if we can't agree to something that is being proposed. My concern would be us, it coming back to us after you negotiate, and then you having to go back in there, because we don't agree with whatever was negotiated. Like, are you okay with that? Are you okay with, okay? Because that's, you know...
Well, because I have a burden to negotiate in good faith. So if I say, okay, the town would blankety-blank respond, I have to come and defend that to you. But on the other side, I'm not gonna go in there and be like, five percent each year for three years, I know the selectman. Of course not. Of course, you're not gonna approve that. So again, I have to bargain in good faith, but I do just want it, I want it known, like, I'm having a fine time, and it's working out, it's working out great, I think.
Wouldn't rather be anywhere in the world, Sluck M'Goolat.
Yeah, no, we're talking about, this isn't regarding any person in particular, but I've heard in the past that someone else has negotiated or participated in negotiations of contracts, and that, and all the information wasn't brought back to the Board, so I'm concerned that, that may happen.
That never happened with me. I never had that problem.
No, I know that. But it's been brought back, some, a member of the Board has said in the past that I didn't participate in negotiations, so-and-so did. I feel comfortable with the Town Administrator having that sole responsibility. She brings it, she, he will bring it back to us, and we will have the final say. She'll give us the good points, bad points, and we'll have a final say in the contract, and if we don't like something, we let her know, and we take a vote on it, let her know, and she goes back and tells whoever she's negotiating with, this is the Board's position. I think it gives us some strength, I think, by us being away from it a little bit. Nothing against the present Personnel Officer.
And since you are currently, Sluck M'Goolat, the person who we have going into those negotiations representing the Board of Selectmen, I do think it's absolutely appropriate if you have the floor.
When I read this, I looked at the first part, which is what I just said. Well, I'm not involved with that. Mrs. Aaronstein tells me about stuff that's going on, and I'll either say, do you want me to be there, or what do you think? We discussed that. I haven't attended meetings, I'll call them personnel meetings. The meetings I have attended have been collective bargaining for the one contract that's open. We've discussed a couple of other things that came up, like the memorandum that we approved a week ago, whatever that was. And the, the evaluation thing goes way back to May of this year, right? And as I said, I've been kinda working on that, and now we're gonna move forward with the September report. So when I read the suggestion, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
I think the negotiations have gone well. When we've caucused, we've talked about similarities. So I don't think it's a good idea for one person to meet in a collective bargaining session. If you don't have a labor lawyer present, I think it's a disadvantage for one person to be in that room alone. As a selectman, I would not wanna be in that room alone.
The good thing, I would agree with some of that. The good thing, though, is that you would not, as the one person, which is proposed, would not be beholden, or would not be making the Board of Selectmen beholden to anything that's discussed. Is that correct?
Right. And I also know my limits. There's no J.D. after my name. I'm not a lawyer, and if I think it's getting sticky or hairy...
Do you pretend to be one on TV?
No. I do not hesitate to call Town Council. I've actually worked with them on negotiations in the past, my prior life here, but it's, I feel comfortable either way, to be honest. I kinda don't wanna take a side.
I understand.
I feel comfortable either way.
The other thing, too, is I was not involved initially, and so I came into this, I think I've been to two meetings, and the, has it always been the same offices that we're meeting with?
Yes.
Okay. So they know we're there representing the Board, the town, and they know that the final approval has to come from the full Board, and that if, and as, as she said, we're not giving away the town, and they're not asking for the town. So if we bring something back to a draft contract, and any Board member says, you know what? We probably should change that to this, or look at that, or whatever, then we'll go back again, all right?
All right. I'm all discussed out. So I apologize. I'll entertain motions.
There's one on the floor.
And I also, I know you're discussed out, but I will just say, sometimes coordinating all the schedule, the only issue, really, is, is like a normal issue that large groups of people always have, is coordinating all of the schedules. So if it could be, you know, we would try, you know, make it everything, but if I could act alone sometimes, just in the interest of time and getting things going, I am, I do not like when contracts linger. I just, it's a thing.
One always comes up while you're lingering.
City of Boston has a two-year lapse right now with their firefighters, not calling them out, but like, that drives me crazy. I don't want that to be held over. We're busy, we have things to do.
And you have met alone.
What's that?
You have, you've had a meeting alone.
Yes. So as long as I have that support, I guess, to do that, I'm perfectly happy.
All right. We have a, and I thank you for that. Discussed out is still not part of Merriam-Webster, but, so we have a motion and a second further discussion to remove the role of Personnel Officer. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion passes. The ayes have it. Madam Administrator, do we need to signify that this is effective now, or is the vote enough?
Well, I think your vote is just no, but I was just gonna ask the question. So is Sluck M'Goolat still gonna be with us on union negotiations?
That's another thing we need to quickly...
Well, I gotta know about the evaluation thing, too.
Well, that actually was another separate vote that it was, was up under one of my goals, and the Board at the time, Sluck M'Goolat was not yet elected, had decided that that was gonna be a Board function, and you would be taking on that task. I have no problem doing it, but that was the vote, so that's covered.
I just had an idea. A couple little paragraphs above it, says, "Selectmen participating in projects." I actually think that Selectmen Goolat, working with you on the evaluation, is directly in line with taking up a project. So, since in the spirit of taking your recommendations, can we have a vote to allow Selectmen Goolat to flesh out the evaluation with Town Administrator Aaronstein? I think that's appropriate. And then we can, we can final, we can discuss what's gonna happen with the current negotiation we have going on. But I do think we should get a vote, because her concern is, what am I, can I still do the evaluation?
She doing, right.
And absolutely, she has a lot of experience doing it, so I'm okay with that. So I will entertain motions to allow Selectmen Goolat to work with the Town Administrator on the evaluation.
I'll make a motion then, Selectwoman Goolat, work with the Town Administrator regarding the evaluation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
All right, so it's the evaluation process, right? That's what we're talking about?
Correct. Yep, and the form, as well.
Yeah.
Everything about the evaluation.
Everything about it.
Everything to get us ready for September the 12th.
Recommendation back to the Board.
So you can look at it.
Yes, thank you.
Now, regarding the current negotiation, I'm, I would, am not privy. Of course, I will be part of the discussion.
Excuse me, could we just go back to "Selectmen participating"? So I'm gonna work, I'm gonna continue the work that I've been doing. All right, so including directing Dighton personnel to work on said project task. So, under this, there's no Dighton personnel working on this. I mean...
Besides Mallory.
Who's Dighton personnel? That's my question.
So this is supposed to be...
We're working together.
Right. So if you say, you're, you're in charge of the, oh my God.
Make up a project.
The playground replacement program. And there's supposed to be one selectman that's gonna take the lead. You would vote, or agree at the very least, at a public meeting, that that selectman, for that capacity, has the authorization of the Board of Selectmen to go forth and do those duties.
I'll represent the Board on that committee, like I am on the stormwater committee.
Stormwater, exactly. And so you have the authorization to go out and work on stormwater projects with vendors or businesses, or whatever, like, that's your domain.
Okay.
That's what I mean. That's all that means.
And before we move on, I just wanna, I started making a list of the stuff that I've got ahead of me in various stages, that I'm not working on alone, but we get the Dighton Rock, not only the Dighton Rock Park, we've got the minimum maintenance bylaw. That's out there. The contract job description evaluation Town Administrator, that goes back to, you were gonna give me some feedback on that UMass form, and I got those other two, so we can handle that out of the meeting.
Well, that's tied in with our evaluation.
Right. What this other, what was just voted. Order of taking for Center Street, I'm still waiting for Matt. I got a draft, I made the correction, sent it back, and I'm still waiting to get the one to record. Stormwater, I'm working now on the education program and the notice of intent. That has to be filed as part of that.
Those last two that you've just described, you are, and the one from that you're waiting for.
Order of taking.
The order of taking. You've already received Selectmen, I don't wanna call it approval, but like, the blessing to do that. So those, you're up and running.
All I'm saying, these are still open.
Open-ended.
Maybe in the final stage, or some might be new. We just did collective bargaining with the Police Department. The Mount Hump drainage thing is in the works. The Complete Streets is in the works. We got the regional agreement that we gotta look at, all of us. The ADA policy thing you mentioned to me.
Yes, so don't do too much with that. I'll, I'm working on that.
No, no, but I was just trying to remember the stuff we talked about that have to be done, that we have to do together, so anyhow.
Actually, all those are...
None of those are a problem for anybody?
No. And I'm actually doing some work on some of those.
And it's not, it's not a problem, but since we're gonna sit, everything but the collective bargaining with the police union, totally fine with. I think we do need to have a discussion about how we're gonna proceed, since Selectmen Goolat has been in those discussions probably since the beginning.
We're also on the end. We have ten items left. I mean, she made some points. I think it would be kind of a disservice, in many ways, not to have her there.
Yeah, just to finish it up.
So I'm just advocating for her to finish this one.
Okay. And are you okay with finishing it?
Oh, yeah.
I know. I don't mean to commit you to meeting this, but I think it would be...
Selectman Pacheco, do you have any issue with that? And then after, it's just the Town Administrator?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. She's participated, I know that.
We should be good for three years after this one.
Right, we hope.
That's what I thought when I started, and now I have three.
Or two years anyhow.
Two years.
Whatever.
So do we need a motion on that, or...
Well, since we did remove the Personnel Officer, I do think we should authorize Selectmen Goolat to finish the collective bargaining for the Police Department.
I'll make that motion then, Selectwoman Goolat, continue to participate in negotiations with the police union.
I'm gonna step down and second that motion. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Madam Administrator, from this list this evening, that you'd like to see acted on?
I just wanna flesh out the "Selectmen participating in projects." So this would be anything that might come before the Board, like, one day, maybe you discuss, I'm just throwing this out here, so nobody gets freaked out, it's just an example. We don't wanna accept pilot programs anymore. So maybe one selectman would be the assigned participant to work with the Board of Sessors, work with myself, and just have that project, and then under "Selectmen Reports" would report it. This might not ever happen. It just, things might come up. Or one day, if we're approached, we want to have a dog park, and a selectman feels particularly strongly about doing that, that selectman can have that as a pet project or something. So, and this might not ever happen, but just that it's there, we all agree that our practice is going to be, we're gonna vote, or agree at the very least, and give authorization to that selectman to act on behalf of the Board in that capacity.
Sure. Sure, and just, just to nip this in the bud, you are like, and I know you are, you're keeping a list of what we've agreed to for our procedures.
It's on my computer, yes, it is, but it's not coherent. I'm actually waiting for all this to be done, so that I can put it in a nice coherent document, but it's there.
Alright, anything else that you'd like to see us discuss or act on from your list of recommendations? Which is dwindling.
Yeah, well, this is round one. I'll just give you some time, but this, the only last part, the last part is just the appointments, and I think some of the things have come up, so I don't believe we need to really flesh these out tonight in the interest of time. But this will be your last, next week, or next meeting will be your last discussion of these, and they'll be done, potentially.
And I'm okay with that. So colleagues, we'll make it to the end of the document. Um, a lot of the recommendations, past what we've already voted on, are very, very brief. So, I think we, I think that's more than possible.
When is our next meeting?
August 22nd.
Yep.
Oh, alright.
Well technically, August 21st, we're gonna post for you to...
For town meeting. August 22nd, okay.
Okay, thank you, Madam Administrator. Very good work, colleagues.
Again, thank you for being so receptive to those, I appreciate it.
Are you thanking us?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Well, thank you, it's so rare. From, from anybody, no, not from you. We get a lot of complaints, okay? Alright, new business, 8A, declaration of 66 chairs as surplus items. I'm just hoping these aren't the new ones, these are the old ones, right?
No, the old ones, for upstairs and downstairs, I'm happy to request, please, if you would declare 66 chairs surplus, those are the school-type chairs, and David Nappi over at the school said that they could always use chairs. So, once you do declare them surplus, and we can send it to the finance committee, I'm going to ask him to come pick them up.
Will we be signing this, this evening, if we vote to declare them as surplus, for, to send to the FinCom?
Uh, yes.
Okay, perfect.
I'll make the motion that we declare 66 school chairs as unused slash surplus property to be donated to the school department.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Just one moment.
How are the chairs? They comfy? They're padded.
Improvement?
They're great, they look great, they lock together, they don't move around.
I love it. And the school gets their property back.
And Karen picked these out, so well done Karen.
Good work.
Karen's a great furniture shopper.
Don't leave us to do interior decorating, please. We'll need a promise from you. Okay, uh, next on the agenda under new business is transfer of Cruiser 11 by police chief. Uh, we did receive correspondence from our police chief on August 6, 2018. To whom it may concern, I, Chief Robert McDonald, am transferring my current Cruiser 11, which is a 2003 Ford Crown Victoria VIN 2FA HP71W13X173421, to the Dayton Fire Department to replace their current Car 3. The current registration on the vehicle under the Dayton Police Department will be canceled upon transfer. Respectfully, Robert, Chief Robert L. McDonald.
Um, I'll make the motion that we approve the request of Chief McDonald to transfer current Cruiser 11 to the Fire Department as outlined in his memo.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Next, under new business, halfway through, we have the third reading of the Fuel Efficient Vehicle Policy, and then a subsequent vote to adopt. I do have to ask, are you tired of reading it, or do you want someone else to?
I'll take it over to you, thank you.
I wrote it, the least I could do is read it on the last try.
Good night.
Have a good night, Mr. Commissioner. Uh, so this is the Fuel Efficient Vehicle Policy background. The Town of Dayton is seeking a Green Community designation, and through this policy, pledges to reduce fuel consumption and energy use by only purchasing fuel-efficient vehicles to meet this goal. Purpose and applicability. To establish a requirement that the Town of Dayton purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable. Further, this policy is adopted in order to make efficient use of municipal vehicles, minimize the cost of town operations to taxpayers. Ching! Enforce environmentally responsible fleet maintenance, minimize the town's consumption of natural resources, to protect and preserve the natural environment, and to comply with the Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Program requirements. This policy shall apply to all departments of the Town of Dayton. Definitions. Combined city and highway MPG, EPA Combined Fuel Economy, MPG meaning miles per gallon. Combined fuel economy means the fuel economy from driving a combination of 43% city miles and 57% highway miles, and is calculated as follows. Combined fuel economy equals 1 over .43 city miles per gallon plus .57 highway miles per gallon. Drive system. The manner in which mechanical power is directly transmitted from a vehicle's drive shaft to the wheels, the following codes are used to indicate drive systems. AWD, All Wheel Drive, Four Wheel Drive, automatically controlled by the vehicle's powertrain system. Four Wheel Drive, or 4WD, Four Wheel Drive. Drive Selectable, Four Wheel Drive with Two Wheel Drive Option. 2WD, Two Wheel Drive. Two Wheel Drive Only, Heavy Duty Vehicle. A vehicle with a manufacturer's gross vehicle weight rating GVWR of more than 8,500 pounds. Guidelines. All departments shall purchase only fuel-efficient vehicles for municipal use whenever such vehicles are commercially available and practicable. The Town of Dayton will maintain an annual vehicle inventory for all municipal vehicles, and maintain a plan for replacing non-exempt vehicles with vehicles that meet, at a minimum, the fuel-efficient ratings contained in the most recent Criterion for Guidance published by the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources Green Communities Division. The fuel efficiency ratings contained therein are based on the most recently published U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, data, combined on, data on combined city and highway miles per gallon for vehicles. Based on 2010 data, vehicles must have a combined fuel economy no less than the following. 2WD car, 29 miles per gallon. 4WD car, why am I doing, four-wheel-drive car, 24 miles per gallon. Two-wheel-drive minivan, 20 miles per gallon. Four-wheel-drive minivan, 18 miles per gallon. Two-wheel-drive pickup truck, 17 miles per gallon. Four-wheel-drive pickup truck, 16 miles per gallon. Two-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle, 21 miles per gallon. And four-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle, 18 miles per gallon. Note, hybrid or electric vehicles in these classes will meet these criteria. Green Communities Criteria for Guidance must be checked for updates prior to purchasing new vehicles. Exemptions. The following vehicles for municipal use are exempt from this policy. Heavy-duty vehicles. Examples include fire trucks, ambulances, and some public work trucks that meet this policy's definition of heavy-duty vehicle. Police cruisers, passenger vans, and cargo vans. Fuel-efficient models are not currently available for these vehicles. However, we commit to purchasing fuel-efficient police cruisers, passenger vans, and cargo vans when they become commercially available. Police and Fire Department administrative vehicles are not exempt, and must meet fuel-efficient requirements. To purchase a new or replacement vehicle for municipal use under one of these exemptions, the department slash division staff responsible for fleet management and/or fleet procurement must request an exemption approval by the Board of Selectmen. Inventory. The following information shall be included in a vehicle inventory list, and said list shall be updated on an annual basis and provided to the State's Green Communities Division. Model, make, model year, month slash year purchased. Drive system, two-wheel-drive, four-wheel-drive, or all-wheel-drive. Heavy-duty vehicle, exempt or non-exempt. Miles per gallon rating, and vehicle function. Note, departments may use EPA Combined Miles per Gallon estimates or actual Combined Miles per Gallon. Fuel-efficient vehicle replacement plan. All non-exempt vehicles shall be replaced with fuel-efficient vehicles that adhere to the most recent Green Communities Criterion for Guidance. Vehicles shall be replaced when they are no longer operable, and will not be recycled from one municipal department/division to another, unless the recycled replacement vehicle meets the fuel efficiency ratings outlined in this policy. In addition, when replacing exempt vehicles, the function of the vehicle will be reviewed for potential replacement with a more fuel-efficient vehicle, including a fuel-efficient non-exempt vehicle. The Town of Dayton will review the vehicle inventory list on an annual basis, along with the Green Communities Criterion for Guidance, to plan for new acquisitions as part of planning for the new fiscal year budget. Questions slash enforcement. To ensure that all vehicle purchases and replacements are consistent with this policy, the Board of Selectmen or its designee shall approve all vehicle purchases to replace any exempt and non-exempt vehicle for municipal use upon consultation with the department staff responsible for fleet management and/or fleet procurement. This policy is enforced by the chief administrative officer and/or his/her designee or designees.
Should I make a motion, can I make a motion? I wanna make a motion that we approve the Fuel Efficient Vehicle Policy.
Yes, yes, Red, second.
Yes, Red.
We have a motion and a second discussion. I just wanted the public to know that if this does pass tonight, it will go before the school committee at their August 14 meeting, which is this upcoming Tuesday. And so that would be the last step. That is the district's decision, that's the school committee's decision, this is the town's decision tonight. But to become a green community, I just wanted folks out there to know that the school committee would also have to authorize the school superintendent, Dr. Azar, to sign that. But that's neither here, here nor there, but I just wanted everyone to know what the procedure is going forward.
If, for some reason it's not approved, we can't get the designation?
Yeah, that's correct.
Even though they're a separate legal entity?
Correct. I know.
But we're using, I mean, it's not on them.
I'm gonna be persuasive, don't worry.
We're using their baseline into everything too, so it's not like, it's just a policy that they're involved with. They're involved with energy savings as well, so the canopies help us.
Absolutely, I, I think we'll probably all be there for the discussion on the pre-K, which we were notified of recently, so I suspect we'll all...
What's the date of that meeting?
August 14.
6:30 PM, DR Media Center. But what I wanted to say is, this is directly in line with all of the green energy improvements they've done with the solar canopies, it's in line with their replacement using green energy boilers. So, I'm not gonna speak for them, I'm gonna knock on wood and say, I think this is in line with the changes they've already been making.
And, and will they benefit if we get the designation?
Yeah, well, the, the funds come, you know, townwide, and they would now be considered part of the town. And to be clear, is the, it's the elementary and Dayton Middle, I don't think the high school is included.
We're not gonna involve the high school.
Yeah, the high school's not included.
Because that's, that's partly Rehoboth. Although I do wanna mention, 'cause I'm not sure if you're, if you had heard this, that Rehoboth has also formed, following Dayton, also formed a Green Communities Committee. So they're also contacting, they've been contacting the school to let them know that they're gonna be doing it from a Rehoboth side as well. Don't know if that's gonna pass, but...
Today I got a Google alert that Marion crafted their bylaw off of ours, so, good work.
So the, the, I call them the local schools as opposed to the high school. The local schools will benefit somehow.
Right.
Absolutely, and just so my colleagues know, and I don't know if I had told you this before, but there was a discussion with the Green Communities Committee about which schools to include in the energy audits with Serpide, and with MassDOER, and it was decided to do the elementary school and the middle school, but to forego the regional school district, so, DR.
The high school.
The high school, exactly. So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. I'm gonna give everybody a round of applause. Leah? Alright, so we already did the request from the harbor master.
Could I, could I just ask, now that we've done this, and we're waiting for the school department, and I'm gonna assume it's gonna pass, what's the next step?
We have a list of to-dos, basically, that are all...
That study that's being done, right, about usage and all of that stuff?
Right, um, the energy audits that they're going to be conducting, so all of that information has been sent out over to them. Eric Garbini from Serpide is doing his thing with, I can't remember the acronym, but with all the energy items.
Mass Energy Insights, with the, where the accounts are, yeah.
So he's off and running there. We have our vehicle inventory list, which we're actually only waiting on the schools to provide their vehicles to add, so we're in great shape, but our deadline is October, so, we're just moving right along. And, uh, there are a few things hanging, but the, the big one was the stretch energy code.
Which?
Which passed.
When, when they came that night, we had that meeting, uh, he did give me his card, because he's been trying to get contact with the Aggie School, and I gave it to the superintendent at that Bristol County Budget Meeting, and she said they were looking for some way to contact somebody about this.
Oh, okay, I'm here.
National Grid, so...
Oh, at National Grid.
So they can, everyone who can benefit?
Absolutely.
With the new buildings, or whatever they're gonna be doing.
Amen, absolutely, absolutely.
So we helped them too.
Right, exactly, we rub our back, we'll rub your back. Any other, before, oh, I did wanna tell my colleagues, I had spoke to the Chairman John Gray, who is the Chairman of the Green Communities Grant Committee, we have agreed to meet the first week of September. I've asked the town administrator to be there, this is kind of our last meeting before we submit the application. We need to speak to Serpide's Eric Garbini about progress, does he need anything from us? So I will let you know when we set that date, so that if you'd like to attend, you can be there. Alright, moving on to the appointment of Jason Quinn to the 40B Committee.
I believe Jason Quinn, who is a member of the zoning Board of Appeals, is the representative for the zoning board, he's replacing me on the 40B Committee as a representative of the zoning board. I worked with Jason Quinn for several years on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think he's a great candidate for this, so I'm gonna make a motion that we approve Jason Quinn to be a member of the 40B Committee, and to expire on June 30th, 2019.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Quinn, is this okay? Does he get the, okay, alright. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. And thank you, Mr. Quinn, for putting another hat on, we do appreciate it very sincerely.
Come off the Green Committee, Green Communities Committee, jump right on this one.
He would be here, but he's delayed in New York.
I understand.
It's actually not surprising, 'cause there's always delays there.
And last, under new business, is to accept the volunteer applications and to send them to the appropriate boards. Uh, this evening, we are looking at an application from a resident of Dayton, Jamie C. Jones, who was applying for a spot on the Soil Conservation Commission, and a Ms. Kelly Borges, who was looking to volunteer on the Council on Aging. My understanding was Council on Aging, isn't that elected?
Oh, no.
Oh, the Housing Authority, oh, sorry, I was confusing the two. I don't think that Council, so we'll, I'm okay with sending it to them, let's let them decide.
I think it's great, even if there is a vacancy, is not a vacancy, they can have this sort of person waiting in the wings, they can educate themselves, or be a volunteer to the Council on Aging, that's something that happens, so I am, I like sending that.
What did you say he's applying for?
Soil Conservation Commission? Hey, I'm just happy to see people using the online application system, we love it.
How did we get into the discussion of the Council on Aging?
Oh, 'cause there's another...
Yeah, there's, I'm sorry, there's a second one right there.
'Cause I'm looking at this one, and I'm saying...
So I'm, I have no, I'm not gonna make the motion, of course, as the chairman, but I'm, I'm, I think this is fine, let's let them decide.
Let's do both together.
Sure. Accepting motions, colleagues.
Um, you're gonna read the other, other name?
Yep, I did, Kelly Borges, Council on Aging, Jamie C. Jones, Soil Conservation Commission.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the application of interest for Soil Conservation Commission appointment to that committee for, and that applicant is Jamie C. Jones, and the applicant from Kelly Borges for the Council on Aging. Forward that to the Council on Aging.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Do we have any correspondence this evening? Okay, perfect. Announcements. Trash bags, recycling stickers, and Sharps disposals are now being sold at Old Town Hall at the Health Department, 1111 Somerset Avenue, again, Board of Health Office. The 40B Committee is looking for two at-large members, and I will make sure that we advertise that on our vacancies page. Do my colleagues have any further announcements this evening?
Uh, just thank you to everybody that turned out in the horrendous rain to support PMC.
Amen.
And all the, also the, uh, town employees, police, fire, I'm not sure about highway, but whoever was out there donating their time, we certainly appreciate that too, 'cause it was a tough day. I think the sky opened up about the time they left DR.
Oh, God, so much.
It's probably cooler riding, but I'm glad we didn't get under the lightning.
Me too, I'm sure they are too. Alright, if we don't have any further announcements, Selectmen's Reports.
Oh, could I just, um...
Of course.
So are we still looking for two here?
We are, I believe.
We have three vacancies on the 40B?
Well, one was Selectman Pacheco, kinda made it a vacancy.
Which we fill to represent someone from the ZBI.
Okay, alright, okay.
And also, I forgot to mention this, please forgive me, if you have, know someone who is 60 years or older, and you wanna keep them active and keep their mind and body healthy and rejuvenated, don't hesitate to contact our executive director, Ms. Alice Souza, at primetime, or Sheila New, program manager. Acknowledgements. Madam Administrator, I think this is near and dear to your heart.
Uh, well, I don't know about that, but I just wanna say thanks. So Bruce Clark is a Commodore at the Shamet Yacht Club, and as people may be aware, we had an incident there where a boat flipped in the river. And this Commodore was incredibly accommodating to not only our personnel, but the federal agencies that responded, Coast Guard, and the like. And I just wanted to say thanks for being so helpful, opened up the facility. This was all day Sunday, all day Saturday, just a very long process to handle this. There were some environmental concerns, so EPA representatives were available. And if you would be so inclined, I'd suggest just a thank, a thank-you letter from the Board of Selectmen, which we could craft up and leave on your desk to be signed. But just, thanks for being a great neighbor and helping us out to get out of a sticky situation.
Are you Mr. Clark by any chance? Oh, okay.
Just checking, I'm asking you if he's everybody.
He's like, you're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we send a, a letter of thanks and appreciation to Commodore Bruce Clark, Shamet Yacht Club, for his assistance and cooperation in the recent incident with the boat.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second discussion. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Great suggestion, by the way, Madam Administrator. All right, moving on to the minutes. On the table this evening are to approve the minutes of the Selectmen's Regular Meeting of July twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen. And I just wanna remind my colleagues, we are now doing two different things. We are approving minutes that were already accepted for review. So, we already accepted these for review, and now we're here tonight discussing their approval.
I'll make a.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of the Selectmen's Regular Meeting of July twenty-fifth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Selectman Gulart, approval of the warrants.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the following warrants be approved. Number six A dash nineteen in the amount of ninety-one thousand, seven-hundred-eighty-four dollars, seventy-five cents payroll. And six B dash nineteen in the amount of four-hundred-forty-five thousand, two-hundred-eighteen dollars and forty cents accounts payable be approved.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Public, we, we have public. Does anyone, would anyone like to say anything? Do you have any questions, comments, concerns, compliments? We like compliments. I'm just kidding, okay?
Compliments?
Anyone?
Literally.
Well, we were only today, and I think Mr. Clark.
We were fishing for compliments.
I would just, I would just comment that I hope anyone that has volunteered, filled out a volunteer application for any position, even though they might have said, I'd like to serve on this committee, if they have talents in other areas where we have open slots, this is how we got Mr. Chandonay to serve on a couple. So, if you have submitted or you have interest, if you would like to apply and get your feet wet, just to see what it's like, attend a meeting or something, you're welcome. And you can certainly say, I applied for soil, but, you know, I think I'm interested in Forty-B, or whatever else is open. We, and, and we like the fact that, these are new names, just like the Agricultural Commission was all new names, so that was good. Everyone's welcome.
Absolutely. So, basically, what that means is, if you send us an application for one thing, you might get a call for another.
We're gonna find a spot.
Which is good, right? Everybody, everybody deserves a place in their town government, of course. Any, any more public input or anything, colleagues?
Nope.
All right. As Chairman, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One-A, Exception Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate if the Chair declares that that meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. Open session will not reconvene.
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's take it to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Roll call.
Aye.
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 All right. Cable, thank you so much. Have a great evening, public. It was nice to have.